Good evening and welcome to the January 21, 2020 meeting of the Glendale City Council. I apologize for starting late for those who are waiting for us at your television sets. We had a extended afternoon session. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian.
President.
Garpetian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
Councilmember Garpetian, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Yes, it would be my honor. Please join me in saluting the flag of our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invitation. Yesterday marked a celebration of the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a giant in the civil rights movement who tore down racial barriers by nonviolent means and the persistent pursuit of justice. He once wrote from a cult's jail cell in Birmingham, Alabama, that quote, "We must use time creatively in the knowledge that the time is always ripe to do right." Let us pray that as members of one community who share common goals for our collective prosperity and security, that we make the most of our limited time in doing what is right for our city and our collective future. Help us work in the spirit of unity and equality for which Reverend King worked so hard and sacrificed his life. Let us find inspiration in his words and deeds tonight and always. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the January 21st, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, January 16, 2020 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And the next item?
Next item is presentation appointments. Three A is agenda previews for the meetings of Tuesday, January 28, 2020.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. For January 28, 2020, Housing Authority, we don't have any business agenda items. However, we will have Glendale Police Department work boot, starting at 3:00 PM at the Police Department Community Room on Isabel Street. In the evening, the regular City Council meeting commencing at 6:00 PM, we have one consent item from the fire chief regarding Verdugo contract extensions with Procedo and Northrop Grumman for computer-aided dispatch replacement. On adoption of ordinances, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a development agreement buy-in between the City of Glendale and Americana Brand LLC pertaining to signage in the advertising overlay zone. Under action items, two reports, first one from Director of Public Works regarding commercial solid waste franchise program, followed by Director of Community Development regarding public outreach process for the Glendale land use, housing and circulation elements update, development and implementation of a citywide transportation impact fee, Senate Bill 743 implementation, West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use Study. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Next item is the consent items, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion proposed.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Next item?
Next item is City Council and staff comments.
I'll start from my left, Mr. Garpetian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions for staff. I was walking Kenyatta Boulevard this weekend and one of the residents was mentioning about the street parking permits. I wanted to know, is it because of the college kids park on the street that there is a parking requirement, a permit requirement, or the residents came together a while ago and asked for a permit?
Is this on?
Kenyatta Boulevard.
Kenyatta Boulevard? Mr. Emrani, do you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Garpetian. We have a preferential parking program in that area because of the Glendale Community College mainly and the college kids basically parking on the streets. So that's why we've established that program for the residents.
So the other question was, why is it that if we establish that program, why is it that the residents have to pay $35 per permit? Is that a cost that it's mandatory? Is it our cost? Is it a fee? Because I understand sometimes residents come together and file a petition to have a permitted, you know, parking on the streets, therefore we charge them. But if we initiated that, I wanted to understand what is the, what's the process?
It's the same, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Garpetian, based on the fact that it does take certain amount of time in terms of processing each of the permits, that dollar amount, and if it's $35, I don't remember what it was, it has been established and it goes through a study for us to really understand what that breakdown is and what those funds would be related to in terms of being able to kind of go back to what the staff hours are, the processing, et cetera, of a permit, whether we've put it into place based on, based on the environment, in this case, Glendale Community College, or if it's by the request of the community where they have to go get signatures, et cetera.
Sure. And if you want to make any changes to this at the budget time?
Correct.
Can I make a change to it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Also, I want to, I want to make sure that, I want to ask for us to take a look at, maybe for City Clerk as well, to take a look at our, because we basically combine our elections with the state, let's make sure that everything we do is based on state's laws this time, right?
Correct.
And let's, let's make sure that everything that we have on our, all of our websites are kind of line up with the, with the state's requirements, because I looked at a couple of things, I don't want to go too deep into it, if you can take a look at it, I would appreciate it, because, for example, the date that you can register is February 18th, and after that, you can also register in different, different, the ones that we have and the one that the state has is not the same, the way that we, state says which precincts you can go to or voting centers you can go to and, and, and register and vote. Let's take a look at it so we make sure that all our information is the same as the state. Also, about the political signs that are being installed everywhere, I had a couple of calls today, today they said, if there's a sign on a public right-of-way, what is the, what is the process of, what is the city, does the city call?
They can call any number and in the past, it's been Neighborhood Services or Code Enforcement that goes out and regulates that, make sure that signs are collected. In the past, there's been, you know, a number of signs that have been collected and then they're just kept or campaigns have been informed.
Correct. And we have followed up with the campaigns.
So do you inform the campaigns that your signs were in the right of? Because they, they need to know, sometimes people come pick up signs and they take them to put, they take five signs and instead of putting all of them on their, on their property, they, they see a good location, maybe they say, oh, I want to do, do a favor or her a favor, they install it in a public right-of-way. So the campaigns will be notified if the signs are removed by the city?
Well, in the past, we'll notify them if we can tell them that there's a sign somewhere posted illegally, but in the routine of Code Enforcement or Neighborhood Services being around and city, city staff have the right to remove signs that are in the right-of-way.
Okay.
Or on public property.
But after that, do you notify the candidates that their signs are removed?
In the past, we have not. Sometimes in some elections, we have, but it hasn't been, there hasn't been any consistent policy as to how campaigns are notified. If there's, I know that in, in years past, if there's been any campaign that's particularly egregious and it's caused a certain burden on staff, they will be notified. And I think even in the past, and City Attorney, you may correct me on this, may even be billed for time that staff has been taking to remove those signs.
Got it. Thank you.
I think we should have a shames, a shame session where we take photos of improperly placed signs and bad, bad candidate. Of course, it's not the candidates most of the time, you're too busy doing a million other things.
Take signs and put them wherever and they think they're doing the candidate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just found out, I don't know who else on the dais knows, but Ovannes Balien passed away and he was a wonderful person who had a satirical magazine for many years. He was also a television host, but most important, every Christmas, he would do a telethon for orphans and raised lots of money, just a wonderful, wonderful person. I'm very sorry to hear that he passed away.
Thank you, Ms. Tragajini. Ms. Devine?
I would just like to tonight nominate for reappointment Garu Gazarian to the Civil Service Commission.
That will be on the agenda.
Thank you.
And I will pass on my comments. Next item, please.
Next item is community event announcements and the three-minute portion that's reserved for individuals who do not wish to speak for five minutes at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. The first card I have is from Tony Passarella.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember, Staff, and Viewing Public. Tony Passarella, 33-year resident of the City of Glendale. Artie, did you roll that?
Sure.
It's sideways, but that's not my fault, the computer.
And as I'm standing here, this woman just opens her shades and I can see her bed there. So this is going right into her bedroom. Let me give you a shot of it before I put the meter on.
Is that the public right-of-way?
Is that Parkway?
Chevy Chase Canyon. I'm here with my power density meter. We're going to measure the microwaves coming off of this 4G satellite.
Just play the video.
That was installed a while back.
Can we rewind that and pause it?
Shades and I can see her bed there.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
So this is going right into her bedroom. Let me give you a shot of it before I put the meter on. 24/7. I bet this woman, I'm not going to knock on her door, but I bet this woman does sleep very well. She just opened up her shade there and peeked out here and wondered, probably heard the noise. So let me turn my meter on and see what you think of this, this sound. It's invisible, right? The microwave's in there, you can't see them, but our DNA in our cells feel it and are affected. Okay, now meter only goes up to 2,000.
That's good. Mr. Garpetian, that, his name is Mary, she came out. I don't know if you know her personally, but your signs on her. So she comes out, she heard the noise, I'm thinking, and I said, may I ask you? She asked, what are you doing? Well, I told her what I was doing. Can I ask you, kind of a personal question? She goes, sure. So I asked her in two ways, I, how she's sleeping. I wanted to get a no response and I wanted to get a yes response. So, so there was no lack of communication and she knew exactly what I was talking about. The woman is having trouble sleeping. The, the microwave radiation affects melatonin, it suppresses melatonin, and whoever okayed this in the neighborhood, 50 feet from this woman's bedroom where she's trying to sleep, sleep and restore, right? That's where we restore in our sleep patterns. Whoever okayed that should be locked up and put in jail. It's, it's an assault. It's assault. So the people need to know what's going on with this. And the 5G, and we're going to put these all over the residences and there are already, you know, 23 of them are going to be okayed and we've probably got hundreds more that are going to be okayed. So what I, what I'm asking for is a study session. Mr. Garpetian, would you nominate, would you bring a motion to have a study session? Let's vote on it tonight. The people need to know that they're being physically harmed by these microwave radiation. We, we got to inform the public. It's as simple as that.
Thank you, Mr. Passarella.
Quick question, Mr. Garpetian. Mr. Passarella, that was, you said, you mentioned the name Mary, was that property on?
Knock on her door.
Is that property on Chevy Chase?
2229 Chevy Chase.
Okay, I know, I know Mary, yes. And that, okay, got it.
Yeah, call, call her and confirm the fact that she can't sleep.
I know, I know, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Staff. My name is Ara Menugian and tonight I'm coming to you to, first of all, announce on the 25th of this month, Saturday, is the global protest against 5G and we are having a protest in Glendale. It's going to be starting at 301 North Brand Boulevard in front of the Sprint Store and it's going to be traveling down Brand Boulevard, passing all of the cellular phone sellers' stores. So I invite you and the city staff and anybody from the general public to join us at 3 o'clock at 301 North Brand Boulevard. Second is I want to echo what Tony just said about a study session. We've asked for study sessions, we haven't received any response. Mr. Garabetian, I would ask you to put a motion forward, this is what other city councils have done in the past. I sent you guys a video a couple days ago of how that process was done in other municipalities for a study session. In that study session, we will not only present the health issues, but we will also have legal experts coming to talk about the constitution, California constitution, the United States Constitution, which all of you have taken an oath to uphold, which includes health and safety. So even if the FCC for some reason has some sort of power over you, which I don't believe they do, as I also sent you an email regarding that, ADA and the Fair Housing Act, FHA, trumps the FCC in every possible way and as Mary isn't sleeping, right there you have FHA that will help her get her rights to have that removed from there because it's not working very well. The last thing I want to do, and I have a minute left, is I want to share with you something that you can find in your iPhone and actually you can find in any phone, but I just know about it in the iPhone because that's what I have. If you go to your general settings and you go down to general and you scroll all the way down where it says legal and regulatory, you click on that, and the last thing on here is RF exposure. When you pull up RF exposure, it tells you what this phone does and how the exposure works. And this particular phone, it's an iPhone 7, it's quite popular, it says very clearly that when this is being used, it should not be held closer to your torso than 5 millimeters. So that means if you're putting it in your shirt pocket and it's going off, you are getting a harmful amount of radiation. The City of Berkeley passed an ordinance five years ago and it was challenged by the telecommunications providers or telecommunications and it went all the way to the Supreme Court and they were able to uphold this ordinance. It's an ordinance I would suggest the City of Glendale adopt, which is this notice would be displayed on a piece of paper or in the cellular phone sellers' stores that shows people what the harmful effects are of RF. So I would ask the City of Glendale adopt the same ordinance because you won't have a legal battle, it's already gone to the Supreme Court. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Garpetian, question. When you, when you say study, study sessions, or you want an opportunity to bring your basically reports and surveys and everything else?
That is correct. A study, a study session basically is usually like an, it's a, it's a special session is what it's called.
Got it, got it.
And then we would bring everything in, including the experts, to talk about the constitution, to talk about the legal rights, to talk about the anti-commandeering and so on and so forth.
Got it. I think, okay, thank you, sir. I have a question for the City Manager. We have that appeal coming, right? When is that appeal coming?
That appeal is scheduled to come before the City Council next Tuesday.
So that's an opportunity for, for everyone to, you know, attend the meeting, bring all your information, everything that you have, but other than that, we, we can't go back in for them, Mr. Mayor, I can't.
Well, no, no, we, we can't.
Okay. We're asking for a study session, either yes or no, so we know what our next step will be.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you. I think after, after the, the appeal meeting, I would like to have, schedule a study session for the community members to be able to bring their, their, their information, because if there's not enough time for them to provide their case at the, at the, at the meeting or at the appeal meeting, maybe we should look into scheduling a, a meeting for them to bring all their information. So we would hear what they have to say, because I don't, I don't know and knowing a little bit more, I don't think it's going to hurt. But how are we going to schedule it? What time, evening hour or afternoon session? That's up to you guys.
Well, you're certainly allowed to meet with them privately. I would hate this to turn into a public spectacle, which I think it is. There's something to be said for a sober and deliberate discussion, if they have experts, to meet with Doreen Marderosian or our legal staff to discuss the constitutional issues. Are we going to have a community discussion on constitutional law or the state of the FCC ordinances and regulations? I don't think so. I think this is, I mean, I don't know if anyone's in favor of that, but I think that the best way to give that information is to a one-on-one meeting with staff and their experts, rather than hold a big public meeting. Who's going to run it? Are we going to have to Brown Act it? Noticing and scheduling and, I mean, it's easier said than done. Certainly each of us is permitted and I'm sure welcome to meet with them individually and do that, but a public study session, I'm against it.
But what is the, what is the difference between having a, a public study session on, on this issue or, for example, our budget, for example? I mean, this is not that, you're not disputing.
You have about an hour and I'll, I'll discuss it. First of all, the City Council has not taken a stand to deny the effects of radiation. So that's not, I'm not sure that's even an issue. No one has said there's no such thing as radiation danger. No one has said that. What we've been talking about is the legal issues and the framework that we have to deal with. That is best done through their experts, whoever they may be, and our city attorney to go through that. I mean, this is, this isn't a rally for, for any purpose. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I, I understand and I appreciate that. I, I made a motion, if there's a support for it, we'll move forward. If there's no support for it, we'll move forward anyways. That's, that's what it is.
I don't have any other cards. Let's move on to the next item, please.
Next item under adoption of ordinances is an urgency ordinance, that's 7A, extending ordinance number 5939, establishing interim standards and ministerial procedure processes for reviewing and approving accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units for a period of 10 months and 15 days, introduced by Councilmember Agajanian on January 14, 2020.
Mr. Agajanian.
I would like to move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Next item, please.
Action items, 8A is Director of Public Works regarding approval of resources to implement B-line service changes. 8A1 is resolution appropriating the amount of $3,557,500 from the Measure R Local Return Fund Undesignated Fund Balance 2540 to capital outlay 2540. Two is a motion authorizing the purchase administrator, purchasing administrator to issue a purchase order, new flyer for America for the purchase of five 35-foot transit buses in amount not to exceed $3,307,500. Three is a motion authorized the State Agent to execute an amendment to the MV Transportation Agreement C105941A for the remaining agreement term for an increased service cost of $1,755,738 and for the one-time capital pass-through cost to overhaul two transit buses in amount of $250,000 for an amendment in amount not to exceed $2,5,738.
Thank you. Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this item was before you last year, December 10th of 2019, regarding the B-line service changes. This portion of it is before you for the resources piece of it to help us with bringing forward more buses that we need to purchase as well, because of the added line, as well as the capital outlay costs that go along with that, for a detailed report, if that's what council would like. Mr. Emrani is available to provide that information to the City Council.
Okay. Mr. Emrani?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. This is the, as Ms. Beers mentioned, the implementation phase of the report that our consultant provided in terms of the, some of the route changes and modifications to the B-line, including adding a new route on Glendale Avenue, a pilot project to add evening services Monday through Thursday, serving at Glendale Community College, and the pilot project to add evening service on Friday and Saturday to serve the downtown area. And basically, the main components include purchasing the five new buses as well as repurposing or overhauling two existing buses at a cost of $250,000. The total cost, including the overhauling of the two existing buses, are 300, excuse me, $3,557,500, which is paid for out of the Measure R Local Return Funds. And we're also asking for authorization to amend the, the fixed route operators' contract MV Transportation to basically account for these additional services so they can provide the labor hours and the drivers to operate these additional hours and the new routes. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Question. Can you let us know about the environmental factors and the emissions on these buses? I know they're not electric, one of which we're getting in a couple of weeks, but can you tell us about these buses?
Sure, I'd be happy to. These are, all CNG are going to be CNG buses that are considered environmentally friendly. They use a efficient Cummins engine so that their emissions are near zero, basically, and the current Cummins engines is certified to be California Air Resources Board and Environmental Protection Agency optional low non-semissions standard. So it's basically very environmental, environmentally friendly.
Thank you.
Mr. Agajanian?
Yes.
Of course, you already mentioned to us in a meeting, which we had before, why we are not buying electric buses rather than buying CNG, let's say, buses.
Councilmember Agajanian, basically, we, as it stands right now, don't have the infrastructure that would be required to operate the, the electric buses. They also don't have the, 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 the charge necessary for some of the routes that we operate. So pretty much for every route, we may have to have like a backup bus in case we run out, we run out of a charge for that bus. But the main reason is we are working on a cooperative report with our neighboring cities to develop a recommendations for what it would take to put in the infrastructure required for electric buses, but at the current time, we simply don't have the infrastructure.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian?
Yeah, the, just to follow up on the, on the same line, I, you know, you were briefed on this item and when you look at the cost of the CNG bus versus electric buses, they're pretty much very close, but my, my suggestion is in the upcoming months, the buses that we have that are old, I know we maintain them very well, instead of 12 years, we extended their lives to 18 years. Look into purchasing, building the infrastructure that we need to purchase from when we want to retire our old buses to purchase electric buses instead of CNG buses, because we are going to that route anyway, so.
Okay. Well, I was going to surprise everybody with the electric bus announcement, but, but I won't, I won't get into it anymore at that point. But I do want to say that- do wanna say that the, um, uh, the other agency that I serve on, Metro, has made a commitment, had made a commitment to go totally electric in their, uh, 2000, uh, 2000 numbers of buses since, uh, the commit was made two years ago. The promise was by 2030, they would be completely electric. Um, as, as they have worked forward, they have had basically the same decision point that we have had, is that what do we do with buses that we need now, and that, that goal of 2030 is not too far away. What they have done is, um, decide to go with the, uh, the Cummins engine, the Cummins Westport L9N engine, which is exceptionally, exceptionally low, uh, emissions. It has, um, a very low .02 grams per horsepower per hour emissions. That's its NOx emissions. So it's extremely low, uh, extremely low emissions. Uh, it's got great power. It's got 320 horsepower with a thousand foot pounds of torque, and it is a six-cylinder engine. It's something that Metro is relying on to go forward, uh, until the year 2030, and maybe even a little bit further than that. There's some discussion as to whether even Metro can make that 2030 all-electric deadline. So I'm pretty comfortable, uh, buying the new buses with that engine and refitting two of our old ones, I believe, with that new engine as well. And it's, um, it's not zero emission, but it's extremely, uh, low emission. And it's something that many of the environmental groups, uh, had even supported at Metro. They said, well, of course, we want the electric, but in the meantime, in this transition period, we'll take those, those particular engines with their .02 grams per horsepower per hour emissions. So that's a little bit wonky, but those are the kind of things that, that, um, that we looked at very closely at Metro. So I'm, um, I'm happy that we're going in that direction, and, and perhaps we can say that these will be the last, uh, fossil fuel buses that, that we'll be putting on the road. And rest assured that even those buses have an extremely low emissions level.
I would like to move the item, 8A.
I have a question before.
Yes.
How much is the cost of an electric bus? We're paying 661.5 for these coming, the flyers, what, what is it?
Think they're close to a million.
About 800?
Mistaken.
Close to a million.
Close to a million each. Okay, that's, okay. Thank you.
Second motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Mary Najarion.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, uh, before we go to the next item, I, I failed to ask one, one more question from staff.
On this item?
A council comment item.
Oh, on council comment?
Just be very brief.
Okay.
Uh, the, the Elon One project that we have, that we participated in, I would like to know if you can send us all, an email or whatever, to bring, bring, not a report back, but just information back about, when did we start that process? And, uh, 'cause I know it's, it was, it's been a while that we started that process, a long time ago. I wanna know the, almost the exact date, if you will, and, and the, the cost of that project.
Sure. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Councilmember Garpetian.
Mr. Zernitz here, okay.
Mr. Zernitz here, if he can answer quickly, please do. Either way, I can also follow up with a note to council.
Right.
Uh, to provide that information.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the project, when it first rose, which was at SCAPA in 2016, at that time, we had inquired to LA, the City of Los Angeles, Department of Water and Power, if they were looking for other participants in the project. At that time, they indicated that they wanted to be the sole participant. Uh, and that project went out to RFP in January of 2017. We didn't let that stop us, and, uh, approximately late 2018, I had a meeting with the former director or general manager of, of Water and Power and brought it up again. And that's kind of where our discussions really took off in earnest. As far as the cost, it is just a little bit under, there's a basic cost, and then there's an option to buy a little bit more storage. But the basic cost is about $32.97 a megawatt. What does that equate to over 25 years? That equates to about $75 million. That's our 12.5% share of the total project. Over 25 years is about $75 million. If we were to exercise the option for the additional storage, which is about 25% more storage, and there's a pretty good idea, a pretty good chance we will do that, it goes up to a 25-year total cost of about $100 million.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is the Director of Community Development regarding potential ban on sale of flavored cigarettes in the city of Glendale. B1 is a motion to note and file. 2 is a motion directing staff.
Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This, uh, item was requested by the city council some months ago to provide you with some information. We initially provided that information by way of a memo to the city council. Um, after the memo was received, council was still interested in, in having a report come back, uh, to have a public discussion, uh, for the council to possibly give us, uh, your thoughts and feedback regarding what you would like for us to look at, um, based on legislation. So, uh, with that, I will go directly to Mr. Calvert, who will provide the, um, overview and go through the PowerPoint presentation with you. Mr. Calvert.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mary Najarion, members of city council. Uh, tonight, we want to provide a bit of a background and an overview, uh, based on council's request to look at this topic of, essentially, e-cigarettes and vaping, um, and, and what action the city could take, what action has been taken by other locations, a number of things that have happened since council made this request, uh, policy action from the city, from, from various city levels, county level, and now the federal government as well. Um, we will touch on a bit of the concerns from the community, uh, vaping community itself, and then provide the alternative, alternatives for council on how we can move forward if they wish to consider an ordinance that would institute some sort of ban on, uh, flavored vaping products. So just a little bit of background, there are a number of devices out there. Uh, some of the main issues that we're, we're seeing and we're hearing in the news basically boils down to two things. We have youth that have become addicted and using these devices, and we have also seen a rash of injuries and deaths that started happening late last year. Really, what was the impetus for, for this discussion? Uh, and, and using of these products comes through various different devices. This image that you see from the, the Center of Disease Control, these range from anything from small handheld devices that could even fit in the palm of your hand, uh, those are often, have often been popular with youth because they can easily be concealed, to these very large-scale devices that are essentially modifiable. It's somebody that can take home, and they can make all kinds of changes to adjust the amount of nicotine, what they wanna use this for. So there's quite of a range of delivery devices for these. And essentially, their goal is to deliver these, these, uh, nicotine products. And they come in a variety of flavors. Uh, when, when this first came onto the market, it really focused on menthol and traditional tobacco flavors. And it started to bleed out even further, starting to create flavors that, you know, anything from cotton candy to chocolate to gummy bear. And this has often been criticized heavily as being focused on youth. Uh, and this is really where, uh, the speculation is that the, the, the rise in, in youth usage of this is coming from these flavors that are essentially targeted towards them. Uh, just a little bit of background from some studies that the CDC has done. Uh, what they found back in 2015 is that, uh, most adults, especially those over the age of 25 or into their 30s, traditionally were smokers, or had been smokers, who were using this product, these products. But ultimately, uh, when it came to youth, these were people that had not been using any form of nicotine or cigarette products at all. So again, kind of reinforcing the idea that these devices, uh, the, the ease of being able to acquire them, uh, their scale and the ability to kind of hide them, the flavors that are associated with them, were leading youth to start using these products and becoming addicted to nicotine, which maybe therefore they wouldn't have been, uh, prior to. Uh, their study in 2017 indicated that 2.8% of all citizens in the United States were users of vaping products. Uh, the latest findings, as of December 27th of 2019, uh, this is the percentage of the vaping-related lung injuries. You can see that about 52, 54% were under the age of 24. Um, typically, you can see the largest section there is the 18 to 24-year-old range. What they did find ultimately, that what the CDC found in terms of these injuries is that 80% of them involve some sort of THC product inside that, that vaping liquid. Uh, now THC is already something that we do prohibit the sale of here in Glendale. Um, but essentially, what they found is having a reaction with other chemicals that were in there that were causing these injuries. We, we had heard about this late last year, essentially between October and December, of a, a rash of injuries and a rash of deaths, deaths that started to occur. Uh, there's also a belief that a large percentage of this was also from products that were being made at home, modified at home, maybe not necessarily being purchased in stores or online. But because of that, there have been a number of steps taken in terms of policy action. It began with the federal government. Uh, in December of 2019, uh, the government decided to raise the, the minimum purchasing age from 18 to 21, which took effect this year. Uh, they've also instituted a temporary ban on fruit and mint-flavored e-cigarette and vaping products. They did have a, they originally proposed a ban that would be any flavors aside from tobacco, but they did, uh, back up on that a little bit when it came to menthol. They did allow that. Um, so that does exclude, uh, tobacco and menthol flavors. At the state level, in September of 2019, there was an executive order to develop recommendations on illegal and counterfeit e-cigarette vaping products. And again, that's behind the idea that maybe some of these injuries and deaths were coming from products that were being manufactured at home, were they being made or sold or purchased on, uh, essentially a black market for these. Uh, November of 2019, the state also sued Juul Labs for its marketing and sales practices. I'm sure you're all familiar, but the Glendale Unified School District has also done the same, again, with the idea that these marketing and sales practices of these flavored products, uh, particularly those that are sweet, fruit-flavored, are targeted towards youth. Uh, in January of 2020, SB 793 proposed a stricter ban than the federal government. Uh, this includes combustible and non-combustible, so that's tobacco products and vaping products, banning everything from menthol flavor to, to fruit flavors as well. Uh, and it also includes the, uh, proposed state budget, which would tax $2 for every 40 milligrams of nicotine product. So the state is going further, uh, than the federal government is. On the local level, in, in Burbank, in October of 2019, uh, they prohibited the sale of flavored, uh, tobacco products. Uh, they also required enhanced education and outreach. Uh, Pasadena, they are currently drafting their staff report, so we're waiting to see what their proposal is. Uh, Los Angeles County, in October of 2019, a unanimous vote to ban the sale and flavor of tobacco products. Uh, and they gave 180 days for local retailers to remove those from the stores. Um, you'll see in, in your, in your council report, there's a number of other locations that we've also cited, Massachusetts, uh, New York, Michigan, many of them did the same thing. Uh, they provided a certain grace period for those stores to remove those from their shelves. There have been some concerns from the vaping community, though, uh, products, essentially the idea that these are supposed to be products that help people quit smoking. Now, this is not an FDA-approved cessation, smoking cessation product, uh, but there is belief that it could help, um, move people on from traditional cigarettes. And that banning these products or removing some of these possible flavors could lead them back to, to traditional smoking. Um, there's also a belief that this could create more counterfeit products as well. As we've cited, there have been, um, there is belief that these counterfeit products, these kind of made-at-home products are, are causing some of the issues. Um, what they, what they have really expressed an interest in, what we've, what we've read about, is that they would like to see a cap put on the nicotine, the amount of nicotine in the actual product, more so than the flavor. So with that, there, we have essentially provided four alternatives to, to city council. Uh, the first here is, is to note and file this report and to continue to monitor what it is that the FDA, the CDC, and the federal government, uh, do. The CDC's research is still ongoing. Uh, again, this is something that is still relatively new, as is the research. Um, the second is for us to go back and, and begin to draft legislation, to draft an ordinance, uh, that would ban the sale of e-cigarettes and, uh, flavored e-cigarettes and flavored, uh, vaping products. Uh, this would require a change to Glendale's municipal code, chapter 5.94. Um, the third could be also to, to further enhance that ban and where these could be used, maybe not, uh, eliminate the products necessarily, but start to reduce the locations and where, uh, where they can be consumed. Um, we can also work on, uh, additional education campaign. We saw that through California, uh, New York, Michigan also did the same thing. They really beefed up their education and awareness campaign. And then the last is any, any alternative that the council would wish for us to pursue. Uh, so that concludes the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of, uh, Mr. Car, Mr. Carpet?
Yes, uh, you mentioned 180 days for them to remove the products from their stores or from their facilities. What happens during that 180 days? Do they still sell some of these while they're removing it, or they have to stop selling? They have 180 days to remove the, remove the products, products from their stores.
That would depend on the jurisdiction. Some gave a 30-day window before their ban took place. Some had an immediate ban in place. So if that ban went into place, they could not continue to sell. Uh, if that ban didn't go into place for another 30, 60, 180 days, then they would still be allowed to sell because the, uh, the ban hadn't been enforced yet.
So that's the timing on the ban, not just have this much time to remove it from your.
Correct. So it's the timing on both of those and making sure that they, they correlate in some fashion.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to.
Mr. Agajanian?
I think offer alternative one, to study more and see what happens.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Well.
Ms. Devine?
Um, I have a, um, an article, a, some statistics in it, which are, I think, kind of alarming. There were 2,561 hospitalizations and 52 deaths caused by vaping. Uh, they cited the federal study found that 5 million middle and high school students reported in 2019, reported having used e-cigarettes in a recent 30-day period, an increase of 3.6 million from the year before. And in 2019, the National Youth Tobacco Survey, released by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Food and Drug Administration, found nearly 1 million of the students reported daily use, and estimated that nearly 2/3 of high school students who use electronic cigarettes do so with menthol and mint flavors. You know, there's not, I mean, do we have to, I don't think we should wait until something catastrophic happens. I think the school board, uh, our school district is, uh, concerned about this issue, and, uh, I think that we should be concerned as well.
And what alternative?
I, I agree. I, I.
Well, I would suggest alternative, uh, number two, to draft, uh, legis, you know, an ordinance, a ban on the sale of flavored e-cigarettes and vaping in our community.
Mr. Carpet, you?
No, I, I, I agree. I, I think alternative two is the right move and, uh, right direction to go. And basically, you won't hear me saying this very often, just follow what Burbank did and, uh, I know, I know.
Yeah, you say that.
But, just a joke, you gotta put some humor with all of this stuff, right? Uh, so I.
Follow what Burbank did.
Alternative two would be, my, my suggestion.
Mr. Wintaro?
Yeah. Um, I, I asked this to come forward. I'm not sure Burbank had taken their action at that point. Regardless, I think two is the best course of action. Uh, I think we need to stop this. It's too dangerous. Uh, and I don't even think that, that we've identified all the dangers. So, um, motion by?
So moved.
Ms. Devine, second, by Garpetian. Alternative two.
Alternative, number two.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Mary Najarion.
Yes. Next item.
9A is a hearing, Director of Community Development regarding a development agreement in accordance with Glendale Municipal Code. In accordance with Glendale Municipal Code, chapter 30.26.100, for ASOS non-accessory signs and sign structures and animated signs and sign structures and amending locations of ASOS signs for the real property located at 889 Americana Way. 1 is introduction for ordinance proving a development agreement. 2 is motion to eliminate two ASOS signs, add one sign, and modify one sign at the real property located at 889 Americana Way.
This is a public hearing, and I'm opening the hearing. Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We'll go directly to Mr. Kiesel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
Good evening.
Americana brand LLC is requesting approval of two items before you this evening. The first is approval of a development agreement, which would enable revenue sharing between the Americana and the city for certain signs within the Americana brand. The second is approval of changes to certain ASOZ signs, uh, within this development, within the Americana brand. Uh, I'd first like to speak about the development agreement, and I think it makes some sense to, uh, provide you with all, you all with some background and history regarding the Americana brand. Uh, in April 2004, uh, the city council approved the town center specific plan, which, um, eventually enabled construction of the Americana brand, which opened in May of 2008. The specific plan, uh, contained regulations, or contained sign- The specific plan contained regulations, or contained sign regulations, I should say, but did not allow large accessory wall signs at that time, at the initial approval. In March of 2010, the council approved what we call the Advertising Signage Overlay Zone, or the ASOZ, to the Glendale Municipal Code. It was a new chapter in the GMC. This overlay zone established standards for ASOZ over geographic areas and placed the ASOZ within the Glendale Galleria and the town center districts of the downtown specific plan. And just for clarification, the Americana brand is located within the Town Center District. So the ASOZ also established regulations for signs allowed within the ASOZ. These regulations included only ASOZ accessory signs are permitted, that only services and goods sold or produced on the premises or within the ASOZ could be advertised on them, and then finally, further, it prohibited animated signs or signs within it. Then in August of 2013, the council revised the ASOZ sign regulations to allow non-accessory signs, allow animated signs, and expand the types of signs allowed in the ASOZ. This was an amendment to the original 2010 ordinance. These revisions included provisions for approval of a development agreement when an ASOZ was established or amended. The development agreement governs the duration and regulations of signage and is required to provide a public benefit. Approval of the development agreement must be done prior to permit issuance when the signs are enhanced. So that really brings us where we are today. The development agreement requested to be approved today implements the public benefits provisions to the city. The development agreement will not freeze our best approvals, and the term is a twenty-year term with two five-year extension options. The public benefit agreement fee is twelve percent of the gross revenue during the amortization period of the signs, and then afterwards, it's a fifteen percent gross revenue. For static wall signs, amortization periods are ten, I'm sorry, are five years, and for animated signs, they're ten years. Last month, the Planning Commission made a finding of consistency between the development agreement and the city's general plan, and recommended that you all approve the DA. So now we'll switch to what the applicants are requesting, the changes to the actual signs. As previously mentioned, the March 2010 council approval identified specific location, size, and elevation of the ASOZ accessory signs. What the applicant is proposing tonight is changes to certain of those signs. The changes include eliminating two signs on Colorado Street, adding one sign on the elevator tower adjacent to the concierge desk within the Americana brand, and then finally, increasing the size of one of the signs located on Colorado. With these changes, the overall amount of ASOZ sign area will remain the same, so even though they're eliminating signs, making some signs bigger, adding a sign, the total amount of sign area will remain unchanged. So I'm going to quickly go through some pictures of the signs as well as orient you where we're talking about. This is the site plan of the Americana, and, let's see, does the, whoops. Okay, so the sign that the applicants are proposing to add is right here, and to orient you, this is Central Avenue, and this is the driveway that goes down to the parking garage, and there's, I believe, a Sprinkles Cupcake Store here. So this is where the new sign is going. Then over here, two signs will be eliminated in this area, and then one sign will be increased This is the sign that is proposed to increase in size by about one hundred and fifty square feet. The length of the sign will remain the same. The height of the sign increases by about two feet.
And that'll be a digital sign or a standard?
It could be a digital sign, yes. This photo here, I'm going to use the mouse, these two signs here and here are the ones the applicants are proposing to eliminate. They currently don't have any sign in them now, but with their elimination, they will not be able to have any signs.
I have a question. It's not going to be this 5G sign, is it?
We're all thinking that and saying, oh, you could...
Well, I had to say it, sorry.
Okay, and this is the sign that they are proposing to add. It's not the greatest picture, I apologize, but this is the elevator tower, and then the sign will be framed within the existing structural frame of the elevator tower, and it would be right here. It's about two stories high and almost the width of the tower.
Yeah. This isn't going to eliminate any of the windows in the elevator, is it?
He's eight by four, yes.
Is it going to eliminate any of the windows in the elevator?
It will.
It will?
Yeah. The first...
The second and third floors.
Yeah, the second and third floors. I don't know if the floors exactly line up with what's, well, I think they look like they do, so it's probably the second and third floors.
You've got to park higher than the second or third floor.
All right. Staff recommends approval of the DA and consideration of the request to amend the certain ASOZ signs. Their council does have several alternatives that they can choose from. The first alternative is the council may introduce the ordinance, which will adopt the development agreement and approve the motion for the sign changes. The second alternative is council may introduce the ordinance to adopt the DA, but deny the motion for the sign changes, meaning do not change the location, size, et cetera, of the signs. Alternative three is council may decline to introduce the ordinance to adopt the development agreement. Finally, if there are other options that you can think of, that's another alternative. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Agujianian?
I don't have question from you.
Okay.
I just have a comment, just raising the issue is, what bothers me is I'm deciding for somebody who will sit here years later. This is almost thirty years, so I'm deciding for all those who will come here at a later time, since we have term limit. The other thing is, not only I'm deciding for them, this is thirty years beyond, my council term is beyond my lifetime, probably, so I just say, maybe we have to make it shorter for the people who will come and sit here to have their chance to raise their concern or issues. But as I said, this is just a concern of, it's not that important, but I'm just raising this.
Mr. Carpetian?
I appreciate Mr. Agujian's comment, but I have a question for staff. I think there is a cancellation clause, if you will, within the first ten years. Somebody mentioned something at our briefing. Is there a time limit that, after that timing, that the council can change the ordinance or what have you? Because I know there is a development agreement, but there is also a...
Just, Mr. Carpetian? Not necessarily a time limit, but as Mr. Kiesel said, this just sets the revenue sharing. It doesn't freeze anything in place. This council or a future council could say, you know, we don't like these signs anymore, and they could prohibit them. What the agreement provides for, though, is that the Americana brand would be allowed to keep their sign through the end of that sign's amortization period.
Which is?
Which is from the time they pull the permit, five years for a static sign, ten years for a digital sign.
So that's ten years, that's the ten, three years that I was referring. Okay, so it's not thirty years within the, if the council, you know, in the future, they want to, they want to, they don't like these signs anymore, there is a ten years that they can stay, and after that, they can change it. That's bottom line.
Correct.
The council members can change it?
Amend it?
Yes.
You can, a year from now, say, we don't like digital signs anymore. We're going to amend the ASOZ chapter in the code to prohibit them. If you do that a year from now, and the Americana has already installed them, they would have, you know, roughly nine years in which to maintain it, to get the money back for their investment, basically.
I have a card. Let's take the card from Ben Howell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city management and staff. My name is Ben Howell. I'm general counsel for Caruso, owner of the Americana brand. First, we want to thank city attorney and planning staff for their work in preparing the development agreement and the accompanying documents. As staff has presented, the development agreement before you tonight simply implements the revenue share component of the city council's action from 2013 to implement an agreement between the Americana brand and the city of Glendale. In addition, we're asking for a modification to the location of certain signage, which will not increase the amount of overall signage at the Americana, but will relocate some signage from Colorado on the exterior of the center to the location that staff has identified. We're not asking for an increase in any of the signage. We're asking tonight for your approval of both the development agreement and the sign modification. That would be staff's alternate number one, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. I'll go back to my colleagues to see what they want to do with this.
I would like to move the item if there is no comment.
I have one question for Mr. Lemo, if I may.
Okay, but let me just make sure what, we'll have discussions, but you're moving alternative one. Alternative one, okay. Mr. Carpetian?
Mr. Lemo, if you don't mind, I have one question, or two questions.
If I remember correctly, most of your signage inside the Americana is for the tenants. Am I correct?
That's correct. Currently, that is correct.
Right, and this signage will be not only for the tenants, for any kind of business that wants to advertise, am I correct?
But currently, the way the zone works is whatever is sold within the Glendale Galleria or the Americana brand can be advertised. This would allow us to be able to use other areas, or what we refer to as off-site signage as well.
Okay. The only thing I'm asking is, let's make sure, I know you guys are very cautious on all of this stuff, but let's make sure that there are no inappropriate advertising on that sign, because I'm putting my signatures on it, so I just want to go on the record and ask that from you.
No doubt, and you should know, we have a code of conduct for all the ads that we consider internally as well.
Sure, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Quintero?
Okay, I support the proposal, and in general, as at least members on the dais understand, I support digital art. It's more than just advertising. I also hope that we will extend this type of possibility to our arts district. If we talk about an arts district and we want to have an arts district, certainly digital art is not even the future anymore. Digital art is happening all over the world. For those of us that have traveled to Asia, we know all of the possibilities when we travel to the capital cities in Asia, and actually, it extends to Europe. My recent trip to Spain, there was digital art on fifteenth-century buildings and something that has become quite prevalent. So along with that, my question is, I'm very happy with a twelve percent gross revenues and later fifteen percent gross revenues that will go into the city of Glendale's treasury. But have we explored the possibility of actually having the city of Glendale not only kind of advertise what it is that we're doing, whether it's the Montrose Christmas Parade or whatever it is, you know, whatever civic project we're doing, but in addition to that, actually having the signs also project some art? Have we at all explored that? Because I think it's important.
Well, I think we're getting into content, Mr. Garcia. Do we have that ability to say you have to put art?
Well, based on what I think Mr. Quintero said earlier, I think it was in reference to generally when the city might use it for when there's available time, PSA, that sort of thing. But yeah, otherwise, any sort of art restriction would run afoul of some content issues, I think. So I'm not sure if there's an answer to the staff hasn't answered the question.
Well, we're signing a deal with this private company to let them advertise, we're going to share in part of the profit. So what I'm saying is, in between advertising messages, that's what they do in other parts of the world, why couldn't some art be projected? I think within the contractual situation that we're here in now, we can get them to do that.
Based on our understanding and in terms of having conversations with the Caruso Company, I can answer one piece of your question, which is if there is downtime associated with the signage that they have offered, that we may be able to utilize the signage appropriately for city services in terms of advertising. So if there is downtime, they would make that offer to the city of Glendale. In terms of art, it's something for us to explore and have that conversation, but that is not something that we had explored prior to this meeting, yes.
I'd like to give Mr. Lemo, see if he might agree to, so yeah, I'd like to see if he might agree to at least explore the idea of having some digital art projected between advertising messages.
Yes, sir. Here's what I think we could do to give you some immediate answers tonight. We will certainly work with city staff as far as events happening in the city to interject them in between the ads. In regards to art, which is always a challenge, because somewhat it's in the eye of the beholder, we will ask for input, both from city staff and other organizations, and look at it very seriously, and if we have any questions, we'll get those to you through city staff.
Okay, I mean, I think it's easy enough. You go online, you see what, and there's digital artists now. There's literally people who devote their lives to digital art, so it seems like...
And it would need to be a little bit on availability as well, because that would limit the city revenue.
Yeah, I know, I know.
A lot, but yes, sir.
And I imagine there would be costs involved, because you'd be paying...
There is cost involved, as far as...
As opposed to getting revenue, you'd be... As opposed to getting revenue, you'd be expending revenue to bring the artist. Unless you bring an artsy ad, like the iPhone ads were very artsy.
Or there may be artists that'll be attending art center schools for design who are going to be more than interested in projecting their art. I don't know.
There's certainly many opportunities.
It's worth, yeah, it's worth exploring it, not just have it be strictly an advertising medium.
We absolutely will.
I would like to move the item. The recommendation is, it's clear to the city attorney.
Mr. Garcia?
So we need to close the hearing, number one, and then 9A1 is introduction of ordinance, and 9A2 is the motion on the signs. So the ordinance is being introduced.
I will, I will close the hearing. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Agagianian. That's the introduction, and the other item is the.
The motion on the.
Let me get the number on it. It would be.
9A2.
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 Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Zaga Janian?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Mayor Nogarian?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Under all communications, discussion is limited, time is not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. A city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. There was one card submitted.
I do have one card from Rolinda Biesmeyer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Usually, you know, I'm here on a more positive note, but this I have a complaint about, and I believe in being squeaky wheel. As a 44-year resident of Glendale, I am an avid still, as a senior, tennis player and pickleball player. I frequent Fremont Park at least four times a week, and my big complaint is the soap dispensers not having any soap in them. And for the last week, every day that I was there, four days, I, you know, complained to the maintenance people, and so they said they would do it. Well, I came back, I was there yesterday and today, and it still hadn't been done. And so then, I finally was able to speak with them again, and they told me that they didn't have the key and that there were some maintenance workers across the street working on potholes. And so one of them came over and he checked in the bathroom, and so he told me it was a barrel key. I didn't know the name of them, but I had those at home, too. And so, but he said that each, he called the maintenance supervisor, and so from there, he said that they would come over and take care of it. And so I was talking to the men in maintenance at the same time. And so, but he said they're all supposed to have these barrel keys so they can put in soap in the dispensers, and it was both of them at Fremont Park, the two bathrooms, for women. I wasn't as concerned about the men's bathroom, but still, you know, just from a hygiene point, we need those soap dispensers. And so, and as a nurse, too. So they told me that a part of the problem was the men's bathrooms were not so much vandalized, but used frequently the soap and just a mess, and so you could just smell the disinfectant from the men's bathroom, how they tried to clean it and sanitize it, but still had nothing to do with the women's bathroom. But that was my big complaint, because I play tennis in Burbank, too, at McCambridge Park, and it's a very nice facility, and so, and those women come here to Glendale to play. So we should have better accommodations for all of our citizens for using the park. And so my recommendation would be to have some sort of signage where they had to check mark or something to say that they had cleaned it or checked it, because evidently, they make sure there's toilet tissue there, but they're not checking the soap to see that, you know, it's coming out of the dispenser. And so that's my first complaint. My second one is, five years ago, the tennis courts at Glendale High School, the city said that they were going to try to work with, you know, citizens and the high school to make it available that on evenings and weekends, that citizens could use the courts there. Well, it's five years, and they've done nothing to remodel the courts at Glendale High School. And so basically, that was what I was getting at. But on a positive note, I will see you at the end of February to talk about my Glendale Youth Orchestra. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff has heard your complaints, and they will, staff has heard your complaints, and they will be taking action.
But I had to leave, I mean, because I wasn't going to stop them from doing their.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. We don't have any new business.
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.